Call to order, the City of Algonquin Council meeting for May eighth, twenty twenty-three. Please join me in flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, our Christian hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Councilmember Frehka?
Here.
Councilmember Cook?
Here.
Councilmember Farrelly?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
And Councilmember Thomas?
Councilmember Thomas is here tonight and make a motion to be excused as applicants.
Second.
I've been motioned second to excuse Phil Thomas and can help his neighbors say aye?
Aye.
Prose in aye? Make the motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Prose in aye?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, we're gonna get a look at it. Any, any questions? All payers say aye?
Aye.
Prose in aye? Passes? Reports?
Did we miss the proclamation?
I am not taking vacation anymore.
No, but is this the one we got at home?
I'm, I'm.
Here we go.
I got it.
You want me to read Jessica?
Well, it's the mayor's proclamation. We'll give you the proclamation. And then I would go with the red agenda as well.
I was blowing right through that too today. So I'm going to read the proclamation for Fort Worth housing. A city of Algonquin proclamation, whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas the US Department of Housing and Urban Development finds affordable housing as housing or documents paying no more than thirty percent gross income for housing costs, including utilities. And whereas the Department of Congress projects by twenty forty-four, King County needs two hundred thousand net new housing units for households at or below eighty percent area median income. And whereas studies have found that each hundred dollar increase in median rent results in fifteen percent increase in homeless and metro areas and thirty-nine percent increase in homeless and nearby suburbs and rural areas. And whereas the COVID-nineteenth pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. Whereas the CDC recognizes safe, healthy, and affordable housing in communities of opportunity as key social determinants of health and determin- determinants of health. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. Whereas united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local affordable housing initiatives, elevating their ability to create public communities and affordable housing. Whereas the City of Algonquin endorses the goals, objective, and purposes of affordable housing, and in doing so frantically recommends itself to ensuring that our communities' recovery from the crisis at hand is equitable and that all people of Algonquin live in a daily routine, safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now, therefore, we resolve that the City of Algonquin does hereby complain that we could make seven to thirteen, twenty twenty-three, as affordable housing. So, reports, Brad?
I have nothing today, Mr. Mayor.
You?
Nothing.
Lisa?
I have nothing.
Russ?
Public works part of it. Uh, we've been doing a lot of mowing, mowing the parks, right aways. We've also started cleaning out some of the ditches. We started on Eighth Avenue and then some on Third Avenue, so we're, we're in the process to start cleaning ditches and start, you know, probably start replacing some stormwater pipe where we deem necessary, whichever, so throughout the summer. Our part-time is starting the twenty-second, Gary, who takes care of the parks, so decided to have him back. I think that's all I got unless you got questions for me.
Okay, so I'm gonna start as the police chief today. Uh, next week is what we call Police Week. So I'm gonna read the history of it real quick. In nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy signed the proclamation, which designated May fifteenth a peace officer memorial day, and the week in which that day falls is Police Week. More enforcement from all around the world will converge on Washington DC on May fourteenth through May twentieth, twenty twenty-three, to participate in a number of planned events. So one of those events this year, Washington unfortunately is putting four names on the wall of officers that died in the line of duty. I just, I'd like to bring that to attention. You'll see the flags go to half, half mask on the fifteenth. You'll also see every officer in their dress uniform, it works for me. So it's, I didn't ask the mayor to do a proclamation, I normally don't. I just wanna bring attention that next week is Police Week where we recognize our fallen and all the hard work that our current officers do. That being said, there's been some progress moving toward getting our public access channel up and running, uh, and that is we've developed the city's YouTube channel. Unfortunately, we would have been streaming live from that tonight, but we don't have fifty subscribers, so please subscribe to the City of Algonquin YouTube channel. As soon as we get fifty subscribers, then we can start streaming live from YouTube. So, um, that's just a shout out for the people on the social media as well as the people in the room. Uh, we will be, sorry.
Can we send that out, Wade?
Yes, we will. Uh, but we will, again, it's City of Algonquin Watch is our YouTube channel, can't miss it, it's got our logo, logo on it. Uh, but once we get those fifty subscribers, then we will be transitioning from Facebook to YouTube channel, and that'll be part of getting our new website up and running, um, and getting our public access channel up and running again. So, uh, I think I mentioned at the last council meeting, but the governor's now signed the budget. Uh, we got six hundred thousand for the Wetlands Park, uh, that we're putting down at, uh, Pacific and Ellison. Um, and then, uh, we are going after an additional six hundred thousand to finish the project in the supplemental budget next year. As many of you, as all of you know, you signed the checks, we hired a lobbyist, Michael Tranceu, he had a very phenomenal job of getting the money and I'm working the behind-the-scenes work. Uh, I too went down on Fridays to keep the ball moving forward. Uh, but I wanna give a shout out to all our legislators, because all our legislators were great champions for the city of the great Blue Heron, and when it come down to budget cuts, the six hundred thousand that we asked for stayed the six hundred thousand. So, uh, we have every intention of going back, uh, and getting it next year. Uh, the other thing that we're currently seeking funding for is, uh, we're looking at ways to do some flood mitigation and do some open space. So, uh, I've contacted the bank that owns the property up at, uh, the, uh, Algonquin Boundary on the, um, west side of, uh, Algonquin Boundary there. Um, and maybe talk about purchasing that property to maybe do a retention pond slash open space. Um, so we're looking for, uh, we're seeking funding sources at the federal level as well as the mayor and I had a great conversation with the chairman of the Flood District about navigable waterways and the possibility of Algonquin being a pilot project for something that would, uh, help fund that retention pond and maybe clean out the ditch at the same time. So, um, we're, we're, uh, that's gonna be one of our biggest pushes moving forward as far as land acquisition now that we kinda got, uh, the Wetlands Park, um, you know, funding secured, some of the funding secured. Uh, I wanna give a shout out to Blue Line, they did the grants for the park district. We met with, um, Tori, the fir-, uh, who works for the firm that's doing the planning for the Wetlands Park. Um, they have the sixty percent design done. They should be sending us some up- updated literature that we can pass out to you, what that's gonna look like, but we need that additional funds. Part of those additional funds are coming from the park district. Uh, Blue Line helped us fill out those grants and I just heard that we should hear something shortly, so we can keep the ball rolling and hopefully by the end of the year, we're talking about doing a little groundbreaking ceremony and then next year the hard construction starts work. So, really positive movement. I know of the former mayor Hill, worked on that for years. I know this council, this is something you guys really wanted to see. Um, I will tell you, uh, this building is sitting on park property. Uh, we did get some good news today. We said, how about we dedicate a larger piece of property for a note permanent open space? And, uh, the, uh, the state and the National Park Service agreed. We have a tentative agreement, of course, we have some paperwork that we have to jump through, oops, but it looks like that's gonna go through, so it's really important that we designate that Wetland as a, as a open space park and, uh, but, uh, so it has some double benefit to the city as well. So, other than that, I'll stand for any questions.
Chief, last meeting you mentioned, uh, coming up with some legislation about drug use in the city?
That's correct. So the, the prosecuting attorney, uh, our city attorney and I authorized both of them to work with the city's attorney for, uh, Normandy Park and, uh, the prosecuting attorney for Normandy Park, because we're a similarly sized agency. Um, I know there's legislation going throughout the valley from Auburn to Kent. I've reviewed the legislation, if you're asking my honest opinion as a cop, uh, it's geared toward a larger agency enforcement. We don't have the capabilities that an Auburn or Kent does, so what I've instructed our, um, two attorneys and the chief from Normandy Park as well as instructed his is, hey, let's all do this collaboratively and think about it from a small-town perspective. That being said, if you're paying attention to the subject in the news, there's a special session called for the sixteenth. Uh, uh, one of our legislators, Jamila Taylor, has been picked to be the point person to, uh, come up with that policy. I met with her on Thursday about this topic last Thursday, and, uh, there appears to be a statewide fix in the work as well. However, there was supposed to be a statewide fix during the legislative session, so I think it's prudent that we continue down two pathways on this subject and, um, uh, again, um, both attorneys dealt right in head-on and, uh, recognized that we're a smaller town with limited capability. So it's great to partner with another small agency, share the cost, and we'll get a good work product.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yep.
It's Jessica.
So I am working on two grant opportunities. Councilmember Thomas mentioned it last meeting, we brought it to the finance committee. Uh, one is recycling grants, and with that, you'll see at the next meeting, I'm gonna bring the recycling pledge that comes with that grant, we have the pledge to be... I don't know the right way to say it, but our goal is to be pushing the recycling message. Um, that's just part of the grant, we have to take the pledge as a city. And then the other is a local records grant. We have, we just confirmed today with the archivists to come in and do an assessment of our records and see what they can take, and then from there, uh, we're hoping to use the local records grant to, uh, help fund a new finance system. So I've been working away on that. There's some other things. Uh, fishing derby this month, thank you. That will be not this coming weekend, it's the twenty-second, I believe?
Twenty.
Twentieth. Sorry, I have a teething, I'm not at home, so sleep has been very little. Uh, so that is the next coming event. We have the Bike Rodeo in June, we'll have some, obviously, movie nights out in the park this summer. It's nice to see the weather's finally turning for us, so I look forward to some of these events being outside and, uh, other than that, if there's any questions for me.
I just have a couple of things I wanna talk about. I attended the Cities and Schools Forum meeting on the twenty-sixth, and I just wanna reiterate the things that we do at Cities and Schools. Our, our, our main focuses are supporting and building pathways to living ranges in Algonquin, Auburn, creating culture, culturally aware and accepting citizens, removing barriers to success as school in eight through fourteen, and supporting upward social economic equality. That's our, as our main goals. And one of the things that's coming up is, uh, they want to link, um, technical school as in automotive to Greerburg College in, uh...
They already won?
No, we're, they're linked, they're not, they're more people interested in it. So we're looking to supply college, students from Auburn who go to Greerburg with tool kits.
My family's over there.
Good. So hopefully we can get this through and, and that's, I'll have a present, I have a company presentation, because the committee asked for somebody, and we support, support and support kids. The only other thing is the AWC Annual Conference is the twentieth to the twenty-third, do you know the title of its name? Um, I, we need you guys to buy it to attend, but we...
Who'd do that?
Since we're camp. Let me know in the next few days, Friday.
What's the date of the meeting?
The, the June twentieth to the twenty-third. Figure it out, yes. Look at that, that's all I have to say. Anybody have anything else? Let's move on to audience participation. The City Council encourages public participation during meetings, and the City Council welcomes your comments. It's time to set aside for you to speak to the City Council on any issue. The council, or the mayor, takes non-agenda matters under advisement before taking action. You are also invited to comment on action items as they are considered during the meeting. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each in addressing the City Council. In addressing the Council, please speak clearly and audibly, state your name and address. Anything online, James?
I'm looking now, sir.
I was concerned about Chris. He's not here.
Hey, add, add, right on cue, Chris Gomez online, please speak into the mic, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Without further ado, let's go to discussion items. First one is item A, the Transportation Improvement Plan.
I believe this is your second touch on this, uh, improvement plan. If you, the council seat or knows of any streets that aren't on this list, by all means, you know, let me know so we could take a look at them and try to get them on the list.
This is today's the first touch, is that correct?
Is it the first touch? Second. I thought we did it last.
Definitely just out of the street, may or so it's fighting first.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the first? Okay.
I think we mentioned it would be coming, so this would, this would be first review.
Your first review, yeah.
I have a question. Let me, uh... I'll go to old word. From, uh, pretty much all of it, is that's... That's the road I walk. I mean, are we, as part of the resurfacing, are we gonna do anything where the curbs are falling into the ditches? Is that gonna be, uh, or what we will do to fix that? I mean, you know, there's a, some places there's a one inch, some places there's a two inch gap between the road and the curb, and they're just like...
Yeah, it looks like it's a reconstruction, a replaced curb and gutter and an overlay, so...
We did that on the walking, right? We fixed all that sidewalk and all the dogs, so...
Yes.
Okay. Any other question?
Are we gonna, are we gonna actually overlay the road with, with, uh, pavement and not gravel or what?
No, it'll be an overlay, yeah, with pavement, yeah.
So they're gonna grind down?
They'll go grind it down and, and repaint it.
Lot of dips.
Yep. Smooth it out?
Yeah, dips. Put it in the road like that.
That would, that'd be nice. Now, like, I heard one Mustang had to actually grow down the road.
So, are the dates on these that, you have the twenty twenty-nine out there, what you brought about, uh, does that have to be out seven years?
No, these dates are flexible, we can, we can change the dates on them and in a priority, so they're not, it's not set in stone on what the date is.
Just as we can set in the budget.
Yes.
If the council sets one of these is a priority, I'd be up here in the budget process and say, yes, we will fund this, then obviously it would get moved up to whenever the council said, yes, that's what we want in the budget.
Any questions or comments?
So I have these ordinance, one, two, two, zero, down twenty-three, how we invest the interest.
Alright, so I had Tara review our first quarter revenue that came in, and she discovered that I was doing something wrong. The investment interest from our LGIP account was supposed to be allocated in all of our funds instead of just the general fund. Uh, so she recommended if we wanted to, and she recommends that we do, uh, do an ordinance that would allow us to just put it in the general fund to help increase that revenue to our general fund. So this ordinance would allow us to do that, uh, otherwise the default is an RCW that, um, we would have to allocate equally to all of funds.
I have a question.
Yes?
Do you actually take board funds and sewer funds and, except for the general fund? Or is it just the money in the general fund?
That goes into the, um, LGIP account?
What?
That goes into our investment account?
Is that all of the invested funds come out of general, uh, funds? Or is it some out of the sewer and some out of the water?
It's safe. I'm having a hard time having answer to that, so... We have our operating account, our checking account, um, and that's for all of our funds, so it's probably safe to say that it's all of our funds that that...
You do that over the weekend, investing to, almost virtually, or something like that?
No, it's like we have a savings account and it just says there.
Were you saying I used to do that?
Yeah.
Take all the funds that moves in the bank and invest over the weekend, this is not to come in during the weekend?
Yeah.
That interest amounted quite a bit actually over time?
Yeah.
And then, just let it all come in and all come back into the funds it came out of, amounts it came out of?
Yeah.
And it amounted quite a bit. Just, just two days? Because nothing, the banks are closed, nothing's gonna come into those banks for those two days, so it's just a little extra that you're not making.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, my only concern would be since it's not the saving bank that the set savings and checking account is in, it wouldn't transfer as fast, and so the transferring takes twenty-four to forty-eight hours to process, and so my lifetime is more than...
They used to always do, if remaining, uh, just for two days a day, two dollars. Friday night, get it back on? Yes, Sunday night. Yeah, Monday, earlier Monday morning.
Any other questions? So you'd like to, uh, especially about the C, the Housing National Plan draft?
Yes, this is on again tonight. This is technically our first touch in a regular council session. So if you have, I don't know how you guys wanna, you just wanna take questions, or?
Yeah.
So if there's any other further discussion you'd like to have with Caitlin and Michelle and what they hear?
This is just a double-page version of this, correct?
Yes, yes.
I have a whole other thing to read.
And it is a new version, that's the second draft.
This is new. Mr., has there been changes?
This is just from Addical and some structure stuff, just cleaning up the language, um, at while provided, uh, further support for that.
We will probably take another touch before the next council meeting, just to clean up some of the graphical elements of it, but there's no content changes that are planned unless they are requested by the council.
Okay, well, that just means we don't have to reread all the pages again.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? C W business, uh, old business would be Ivan? Ivan A, uh, Blue Line talk for an employment agreement?
Alright, so this is the third touch. Nothing has changed with it, so if you have any questions, feel free to fire away. Otherwise, the council would like to put a recommended action of, uh, of the next mission of it. Yeah, you have Caitlin and Michelle here, if you have questions.
Now we will be at the next council meeting and the one after that as well, yeah.
Did we go for Anderson?
Did we get what?
Did we go for Anderson?
We do, it is the Growth Management Act update, right?
On, on the housing thing?
On the conference, yes.
This is the conference, the complete conference.
But didn't you get it written?
Yeah, is that, is that all? Yeah, it's basically cast with... Yeah, it's basically cast with. So this is basically just minimum authorization to put the con act together?
Yes.
Then we have the ability to input, put our input action code together?
Robust, a robust amount of input from the commission and the council will be required for this document and con act.
Well, that's good because we want to do that. I have a motion that we approve the execution of the proposal with the Blue Line group.
I'll second it. I have a motion in the second to approve the exit plan, if you may agree to it, if you need questions. All payers say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. Passes. If there's a good open cover, this is real resolutions. If you may have anything else, script from your, at all, Jeremy.